Good evening. I call to order the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners Regular Meeting of March 18th. Good evening, Madam Commissioners.
Good evening.
Good evening. We're going to start out as we always do on our agenda with silent prayer and Pledge of Allegiance. As we have our silent prayer, I would just ask that we think about the eight people that were murdered in Atlanta. They were primarily, the majority of them were Asians. And as we know, the violence against Asian has been increasing. So I'm just asking that we have a silent prayer in their behalf and also we'll go into the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion to approve of the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dre House?
Yes.
Thank you. And so we have two fine gentlemen in front of us from Springfield Township, Mark Burning, the President of Springfield Township Trustees, and Rob Lineiger, the Springfield Township Fire Chief. You guys are my neighbors. So thank you so much for inviting us to come to Springfield Township. And we're going to open it up for you to say a few words.
Well, I'm Mark Burning and I'm going to let Rob talk about the COVID, mainly because he's been intricately involved in all the facets that we've gone through, from obviously our EMS to CARES and everything else. So I'll let him handle that.
Great. Well, thanks for the invite this evening. It's a pleasure to be with everyone. I think I know everyone except Commissioner Reese. It's a pleasure. This is the first time to see you in an official capacity, so congratulations.
Thank you.
A few things about Springfield Township I'd like to share. As you know, we had one of the first COVID cases in Hamilton County, and that was on March 15th, 2020. Since that time, we just celebrated our one-year anniversary. We actually exceeded over 3,200 cases of confirmed COVID in Springfield Township. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that we transported everyone, but it did put a lot of demand for fire and EMS services on the fire department and police department, as you can imagine. One of the things I wanted to say thank you and also just express appreciation again for allowing us to access the CARES Act funding. That was critical in us being able to purchase our PPE, our personal protective equipment. And we purchased some Lucas devices, which are hands-free CPR devices. We purchased AEDs and decon equipment for our ambulances. So all of that money was spent towards COVID purposes, COVID decon, and most importantly, to protect our personnel from exposure to the pandemic. The other thing is, you know, we pride ourselves on being self-sufficient. But when a pandemic or a disaster occurs, you quickly realize that you need to work collaboratively. And that's the word that I really want to emphasize here tonight with you, is really collaboratively is the key. For example, Hamilton County Communications Center. The first responders cannot do what we do every day without those resources. I'd like to recognize Director Andy Knapp, Sean Cruz, Scott Brown, and all the dispatchers that did a great job managing the additional call volume and sharing COVID information to keep the COVID first responders safe from COVID exposures. The Hamilton County Public Health, Commissioner Greg Kesterman, John Sherard and staff shared their daily statistics with us. They kept us up to date on CDC information, and they were always accessible to any questions that we might have. Hamilton County EMA, Emergency Management Agency Director Nick Crosley and staff, took charge of getting personal protective equipment from federal, state agencies when PPE was not available. And how he did it, I'm not sure. I think he asked for a lot of favors, but he was able to get his PPE in a very timely manner, once again, to keep local first responders safe. A few additional things that I just want to share with you as a resource to Hamilton County. As you know, we have the UC Mobile Stroke Unit housed here at Station 79. It continues to be in service, and it is available to residents in Hamilton County. If someone is having a stroke, that goes through the Hamilton County Communications Center, and then the local agency is dispatched, and at the same time, the UC Mobile Stroke Unit is dispatched as well. And they continue to provide services to those in need. It is, and it is a tremendous asset. There's only 25 of those mobile stroke units in the country, and we're fortunate to have one here locally in Hamilton County. And as you know, Springfield Township, we're in the center of Hamilton County, which makes it very advantageous for them and convenient for them to access most of the jurisdictions in Hamilton County. So we're very thankful to have and offer that resource to everyone in Hamilton County. We also partnership with Hamilton County Public Health. We work with them to administer vaccines via pods that we have established throughout the community. And just most recently, we worked with Greg Kesterman and John Sherard in establishing a program that will allow us to go out in the community and vaccine homebound seniors that cannot get access to the vaccination because of either their inability to use technology to schedule an appointment or because they don't have transportation or some type of support mechanism to allow them to access the various resources. So what we're doing is, our goal is to get as many vaccinations out to our community as possible. And this isn't just in Springfield Township. John Sherard reached out to the Hamilton County Fire Chiefs yesterday and requested that they all participate in the homebound program and literally send paramedics out to those homebound residents and offer to administer the vaccines. So there are a lot of programs going on. The mission obviously is to help those in need, and that could be a variety of different needs. Transportation, just the ability to access the various registrations that are required to get vaccines and so on. Commissioner Reese, you held your program the other night to, again, encourage people to go out and get vaccinations and so on. So we're advocates of the vaccination. I've had it. Trustee Burning has had it. So, you know, we're advocates of it. And we're encouraging everyone to get the vaccine. And if you do not have access to it, please call someone and we'll try and make arrangements to make that happen. But we appreciate the opportunity to participate in your meeting this evening. Do you have any questions, Commissioners?
Well, one thing I know is you guys are doing a lot of economic development out there. You've got some beautiful homes that I actually went past and went in to take a look at. So there's a lot of economic development going on right now.
Doing our best.
You're doing your best.
It's always a struggle during a pandemic, but it's been very, last couple of years. And actually, we're going to have a dry health facility right at Galveston, across county.
Mm-hmm, okay, great. I'll open it up to my colleagues and see if there are any questions or comments. Vice President Reese?
I just want to just thank Rob and Mark for hosting us tonight. I spent a lot of time in Springfield Township. My sister lives there, and a lot of my church members live. And I also had a chance to represent Springfield Township as a state representative. So certainly, we were together fighting against the cuts to local government back then and got a lot of activity from Springfield Township residents and leadership on that. And also worked for many years with, now retired, I guess you could say, Gwen McFarland, who was the Springfield Township trustee for some time. So I'm looking forward to continue to work with you guys. Partnership, like you said, is everything. And as I'm now leading on the Economic Recovery and Relief Task Force for the Commission, certainly looking forward to working with you and being as helpful as we can to make sure that our townships are not left behind.
Thank you. Commissioner Dre House?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President, and thank you for hosting us. I think all three of us, I'll speak for all three. We really enjoy these evening meetings out in the community. I wish we were there in person, but this is, I guess, the next best thing. So thanks for giving us an update on what you guys are doing, you know, yourselves and then also in partnership with the county. I just want to highlight something, Chief, that you said related to the first responders going into the community, into the homes of those that are homebound in partnership with public health that administering the vaccine. Because I think, you know, without your partnership and the partnership of other communities, that just wouldn't be possible. So thanks for doing that. Please thank your team for helping out, because when we talk about vulnerable populations, that's exactly what we're talking about. So thanks so much for all that you're doing out in Springfield Township.
You're quite welcome. And Commissioner Dre House, just to be clear, this just started. So if people are going to start calling and saying, hey, I would like you to come out to my house. There is a criteria. We are partnership with Council on Aging, and they're the ones who are actually providing the names to us. And those are going through the Health Department. And then we are working with Greg Kesterman and his staff to then identify that vulnerable population. And then we're willing to use our resources to go out in the community and then administer the vaccine.
Yep, it's great. It's great partnership. Thank you for doing it.
Fantastic. Thank you, guys, for taking time to let us know about Springfield Township. I know there's a lot of things you haven't told us about that are going on in Springfield Township. We don't want everybody to know your secrets, but it's just such a well-kept community when I go through there. So thank you so much. You're welcome to stay on. You don't have to. We won't hold it against you. But we'll move on with our meeting, and I thank both of you for being here tonight.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I could just very, very briefly, if the board would indulge me, I just want to take this opportunity. Chief Lineiger, I just want to comment for those who may be watching. I think everybody knows how much of a priority the county has placed on 911 operations over the years. And we had, for years, been looking for additional state support and other types of support for our 911 program so that we could do what the board has already now done, and that is decrease the detail rate. And I just want to thank Chief Lineiger for all of his work that he has done, working side by side with the county. Numerous trips up to Columbus with Chief Lineiger to testify in front of the General Assembly and talking here locally with other stakeholders about the importance of 911. What he has meant to that center in his partnership over the years just can't be understated. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the chief for all of his work and to thank him personally for that.
Thank you, Jeff. I knew you were being modest. Say something?
Thank you, Jeff. I'm very humbled. Thank you, thank you. We're going to keep it.
Thank you. So we will move right along to presentations. I see Nick Crosley is here. He has a presentation this evening. Hi, Nick.
Hi. Thank you for your time. I just have to echo those comments about Chief Lineiger. You know, he's been, I think he's been president of the Fire Chiefs Association since I got here six years ago. I'm not sure he meant to do that, but he was. And especially during COVID, he was just a huge asset for me to figure out how to help best, how to best help our first responders, especially the EMS crews and the fire crews that are going out and the police departments. So I want to echo those comments to say thank you for your support to helping me make good decisions when it came to helping you. So we are asking you this evening to proclaim next week as Severe Weather Awareness Week, so March 21st through 27th. So as you know, we experience our own share of severe weather in Hamilton County. We just came out of our winter season where we had some, both expected and unexpected snowfalls, which caused quite a few problems. We've already had our first flood down on the river. And so what we try to do next week with your proclamation is, this year, unfortunately, we're not getting out in the community as much because of COVID, but we're doing a huge statewide push on social media and other avenues. We've done some media interviews, Channel 5. We partner with them a lot. They're going to run a special on especially high-rise preparedness. If you live in a high-rise, how to respond to tornado watches and warnings and severe thunderstorms and things like that. So we do this every year, and it's our opportunity. Normally, we'd be working with elementary schools throughout the county. We do a poster contest a lot of times. We bring people in to award them for their hard work, children. We work a lot with organizations. We go out, normally do a lot of presentations. It's just been unfortunately hampered this year, but we anticipate getting back on that track next year. So we have a statewide tornado drill next week. We're not going to set off the sirens in Hamilton County to go along with that. You know, we did an extra one a couple of weeks ago. But I think it just goes to show, the reason we do this is to, we want to make sure people are informed about what's going to happen. So for example, we had a severe weather threat yesterday. We were actually in the 2% tornadic range, which is actually fairly high for probability, to make sure that they can get the warnings they need to get, and they know what to do when they receive those warnings. So that's sort of our push. It's our push year-round, but we make a special effort in March, much like we do when it gets time for winter weather around December. So we appreciate you supporting this proclamation, and that's pretty much what we're trying to do.
Thank you, Nick, and thank you for all that you do and your team. And I'll be happy to coordinate that proclamation through all the other offices to make sure that happens next week. I'll open it to my colleagues if there are any comments. Vice President Reese?
No, Madam President. Supporting the proclamation and thanking Nick again for all the work that he does. He keeps us very informed, a lot of emails and lots of contacts. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dre House?
Yeah, I want to echo the comments of thanks and gratitude to Nick and the team. And also, Nick, your work out in the jurisdictions throughout the county to make sure they too are up to speed on, you know, all the potential, you know, weather-related or otherwise-related crises that might hit this community. I think we're in the middle of one right now, as a matter of fact. So thanks again, you know, for everything you do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. We have our next item of business, public comments. And I believe we have at least one person, Bridget, who would like to give some public comments?
Thank you, Madam President. I think that we have at least two right now. And just to remind our attendees, if they'd like to raise their hand or indicate in the chat if they'd like to speak to the board, we'll call on you. But first up, we've got Paul Drews. I'm asking you to unmute on my end. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul, and welcome. We limit our comments to two minutes, if you could, please. And we're ready to hear you.
Thank you very much. First of all, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam President, Madam Vice President, Commissioners and County Leaders. I'd ask if you received our written comment we submitted earlier this evening, and it relates to Resolution Number P-041-21. Were you able to receive that and have an opportunity to review it?
Yes, sir, we did. And we will be addressing the comment that came in this evening in just a few minutes.
Wonderful. So just to give a little brief additional context to this. Attentee, so my name is Paul Drews, and I'm with Attentee. We're an electronic monitoring company based out of Florida. We've been doing this for over 25 years. In fact, we're the first company in the business to design and develop GPS monitoring device for use in criminal justice, to support criminal justice agencies in supervising individuals out in the community, both GPS, RF, and alcohol. We responded to ITB-094-20 that was issued late last year. We received notification in December that we were the lowest-priced bidder to have responded to all the product commodities. We presented, we were invited to do a, there was a list of three vendors. We were one of the three invited to do a presentation, which we did on Thursday, January 28th, spent two hours with the agency and procurement, presenting all our products and software, brought products with us, left them behind. During that time, covered all the aspects, all the terms and conditions and requirements. And at the end, ensured through question and answer with the agency staff that were present, that we had complied with all of their requirements and had satisfied all their questions to which they responded in the affirmative. We hadn't heard anything else since that January presentation and meeting until we inquired late last week with procurement to discover that they were in contract negotiation with another vendor. We threw a series of written emails with procurement, Jill Williams. We entered into some dialogue and expressed our concerns. And I think the written comment that we submitted summarizes that. So we would simply ask that the commission recognize our points, reject the award to a Sentinel, and consider the award to Attentee U.S. We believe we are, in fact, the lowest-priced and fully compliant bidder in this ITB.
Okay, thank you, sir. We plan on discussing this, but since it is on the table right now, I would like to ask my colleagues, item number seven under the consent agenda is what Mr. Drews is referring to. And I'm going to really defer to Jeff to speak to this. I'm asking our colleagues if we could defer this item because of the amount of money we're talking about and because of the concerns that were initiated tonight and the written concerns. It deserves us to look at what was sent to us and really read it thoroughly as we look at item seven. We're talking about a $4 million consent item. And so I will go to Jeff, if you have any comments. But I'm asking the board if they can consider delaying this item until Tuesday, if we can take time to review this issue. And Jeff, you want to give some information on that?
Sure, Madam President. Yeah, and nothing really substantive that I want to add about the process or the project or certainly the vendors at this time. Only just to say, from a procedural perspective, I know that we did get the comment and the question from Attentee late in the day today. I think that the board is prudent in asking for some information on the topic. I've spoken with representatives from purchasing and from probation and have indicated to them the need to provide some information to the board on the matter. I do understand that there could be a bit of a timing issue depending upon the way the board wants to go on this, that if we, that there is a contractual date that if we push too far past that at the end of the month could require keeping the existing provider on board, which could lead to some costs. But at the end of the day, the board needs to ensure that its questions are answered. And what I would just say from this point, Madam President, is that we will look to turn around a report on the process and addressing the questions that Mr. Drews raised as quickly as possible, potentially in a timeframe that would put you in the position to act one way or the other on this at Tuesday's staff meeting, if not by the latest on Thursday. So we're happy to do that at this point.
And Mr. Drews, I'm just wondering, when were you alerted that another company was being considered?
We were never alerted, Madam President. We reached out on our own because we hadn't heard any response or any updates. We reached out on our own last Thursday, the 11th, to Ms. Jill Williams, the procurement agent who was identified as the point of contact, and asked her for a status and update. And at that time, we were notified that they were in contract discussions and final stages with another vendor. And it was this Monday when we looked at the site that we saw the resolution and discovered that it was certainly far along in the process and that we, you know, needed to ask additional questions.
Okay, thank you. And I understand how you became aware, heard all that. I was just wondering, you know, the fact that we just got it today. I was just wondering, at the point that you sent it, why you didn't, you know, why you didn't send it a little sooner, even when you looked at the site on Monday? But that's neither nor there. We think it's-
If I could, if I could, Madam President, on Monday, when we discovered, we did, we did send follow-up emails to Ms. Williams, and we'd certainly be delighted to provide you the email trail. On Monday, we asked more direct questions to Ms. Williams about the award, the pending award. She did not reply to those until, I believe, Wednesday. At that time, we asked additional follow-up questions, and those she didn't reply to until this morning. So we were as diligent as we possibly could as we got this information to bring and raise our concerns to procurement and felt that the last email we sent today, we never did get a response from. So we felt the best course of action was to reach out to the Commissioners.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And we have it now, and we're going to take some action. As I was saying earlier, if my other colleagues are in agreement to defer it at least till Tuesday. I'll open it up to Vice President Reese.
I agree, Madam President. I think that's the best approach at this time so we can get more information and Administrator Aludo could get more information. So I support that action.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dre House?
Yeah, I support holding it until Tuesday.
Okay. All righty, then, that's what we'll do. Jackie, do I need to do anything just to take it off the agenda or not?
No, you'll just hold the, when you get to the consent agenda, you can just hold that item.
Okay, very good.
Over until Tuesday. Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Drews. So we'll move on to comments and motions from the Commissioners. Vice President Reese?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I have a couple announcements, a couple thank yous. Just want to, first of all, thank all those who participated in the relief-a-thon in terms of our partners. And, give me one second, I can name those. My printer was not working tonight. But I want to thank Vows of Family Services, City of Cincinnati, HCDC, United Way, Waycross Media, City Forest Park, Cincinnati NAACP, Tabern House, Community Action Agency, National Development Council, Bethany House, Village of Lincoln Heights, Urban League of Greater Cincinnati, Free Store Food Bank, Village of Gulf Manor, All In Cincinnati, Village of Silverton, Sorda, City Cable, Council on Aging, Meals on Wheels, Greater Cincinnati Micro Enterprise Initiative, Greater Cincinnati, North Kentucky, Apartment Association, and City of Cincinnati Office of Human Relations, Hamilton County Health Commission, and Def Choice, especially United Way. Just want to thank a lot of people, a lot of good feedback. People are able to be helping. I think it's a good kickoff to the navigators that we voted for and that will be starting soon, where people will be able to have a chance to talk to a live person and be able to get a response back as quickly as possible. One of the things, April's rent will be coming up. And with everything that's going on, I do want to thank the Clerk of Corks, Abtav Pierval, who was also on from the Help Center. That is a big issue. People are concerned- People are concerned about being evicted. So certainly, we wanted to get something going before April's bills come up, the first of the month, and hopefully people will be able to be connected to that help before the April bill. So I just wanted to highlight that, and I think certainly a good test model for future that we could continue to connect as many people as possible to all the help that we have voted on, supported, and other help that's out there through different agencies at the same time. So wanted to highlight that and thank everyone. I want to thank the administration as well, Jeff, Holly, and Bridget as well, who worked really hard on this as well. So just want to thank everyone for that. And most importantly, the people who are calling saying that they were able to get help or they found out that there were things that, you know, that was out there that they just didn't maybe know because they've never had to try to find help before. So they're very appreciative of the work of Hamilton County. Second is I want to, I want to submit a resolution for the commission to review and have time to review it and have a, hopefully a vote next week. It's a resolution on something I've been talking about for a little while, this mobile one-stop, mobile one-stop COVID-nineteen, mobile one-stop tech bus. And I will be completely honest, the idea came in February, in, in February, when we were talking with the governor on a virtual town hall, and Cincinnati NAACP President Joe Mallory indicated, one of the things was about going mobile was, you know, he said this, "Big, we need a bus to go mobile around to these communities." At that time, we were very restrictive. We didn't really have the doses. They were trickling in, and we hadn't even been at the churches yet. We also indicated that we should go into the churches, and the governor agreed at that time and did provide extra doses in the churches. Since that time, as you know, there still continues to be number, high numbers of African-Americans not connected to the doses and low-income and, and low-income communities because of the difficulty it is, and this is not our fault or our health commissioner's fault, but the difficulties it is technology-wise, we still have places that don't even have Wi-Fi, Lincoln Heights, which we're working on trying to get Wi-Fi, but there's a lot of places that don't have Wi-Fi. There's a lot of seniors who don't know how to work the system. Yes, we have done some with two-on-one, but there's still more work to be done. And so the resolution is a resolution that will be coming forward. And I'll bring it up real quick to ask us to move forward. As you know, the President of the United States, Joe Biden, has said that going mobile is, is important. The governor has said going mobile, he supports it. And so the resolution would build on the concept that was brought to us by the community. And it will ask us to allocate, we, we've given eighteen million dollars to the Health Collaborative, and my understanding from the reports that we've gotten, five million has been used. And it's for testing, and I understand they want to be able to do some vaccine coordination. And so one of the things is to be able to allocate five-hundred-thousand dollars from that fund that could be designated for this one-stop COVID-nineteen resource mobile tech bus. Now, this bus is modeled after Hampton University, and I will actually be at Hampton tomorrow to actually get on and look at the bus firsthand. But we did host a, a, we had, we hosted a meeting with the manufacturer, and Jeff Aludo was on, and I understand, Madam President, your chief of staff was on, and they were able to ask a lot of questions. Health Collaborative was on. But this would be a bus that wouldn't be just one-time use. It would do testing, vaccine screening, possibly pharmacy, but won't be limited to that. When this is COVID-nineteen is over, and I like to hear the word "over," it will be able to be used to deal with a lot of the issues that we have said that are important to us, which is reducing those health disparities that we have. Because when this is over, African-Americans will still be dying unfortunately to heart attacks, high blood pressure, cancer, all those areas that we go really high in. And so this could be used for that, and there may be other uses. So this would direct, the resolution would direct us, directing the administration to identify and allocate those funds and be able to have the best approach to get this done. We'd like to see it happen in April, whether it's through a grant program of an existing nonprofit that we work with, or whether it's through a procurement process, which of course is a lot longer. But we have people out there right now on contract that are doing things that might be able to help with this. Now, I want to say in this, I got a call right before this meeting, that Kroger's, because I see this as a public-private partnership, Kroger's has come in with a minimum of twenty-thousand dollars plus helping with staffing. They're committed to this process. We also have the governor talked to their office, and they're working toward providing the doses, because you know, we can't do anything without getting the doses from the governor. And so those are some good potential partnerships that's moving forward, and I'd like us to move on that, to allow the administration to do the outreach and be able to have something like this. So that's the resolution. You will have that in front of you, and I'm submitting it today to be on the record and be, be able to have a vote next week.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yeah, so related to this, or Commissioner Reese, are you finished with your comments?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay, so related to that, though, I, I would welcome a conversation about this, kind of a, I don't know, Madam President, if we can do that at a staff meeting, or Commissioner Reese, if we can exchange, I can't exchange emails with you. So, and I have talked to your staff about this. So just some, some questions I have related to this mobile unit. We already have, as you know, three mobile units through public health, and I'm trying, and I've, I've asked your chief of staff about this, trying to get a better understanding of, first of all, the, the need for something in addition to what we have already operating, but also if, if that, if there is an additional need, if it can be incorporated in what we already have or, or not, and, and what those additional things are, and you just outlined some of them. So I, I don't know what, you know, the, the best forum for that is, honestly.
Yeah, I think the best forum would be, once we get the resolution for us to review it, and what comments we have, definitely we need to put it on a staff meeting, and we can discuss it at that time. That's what I think the best venue would be, and then it'll be public. And then also, we can ask, I mean, of course, our chiefs of staff can, if, if I have a concern, you know, a bishop can get together with the other chiefs of staff, but I, I would prefer that the majority of the discussion be, be open, and that once I get the resolution, I can look at it even better and have some more questions. So, so that on our, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, Madam President, I definitely want it out in the open.
Sure.
I agree with that. This is something that came from the community. And I just want to highlight something that I think is very important, that I thought President Joe Biden did a great job on. He said, "We've got to throw everything we got to kill off this COVID." And he threw out a bunch of stuff that they're going to be doing. We got to, we got mass vaccination places, we got National Guard that's going to be gone, we want mobile. He's throwing everything he has at this. And I think the same way with us. It's not to say that we didn't have, we, we got some vans, and they weren't mobile until I, I think I brought up at the first meeting a couple of weeks ago, at least not in African-American community. But even at the same time, we're still not getting the results that we claim we wanted. We've been going to African-American churches. I think those are great, but when we go there, because of maybe the restrictions that maybe the governor had, he's going to lift some of those restrictions now. But we went in, we weren't vaccinating the choir, the whole choir. We didn't go in and vaccinate the members, all the members at those African-American churches. In fact, Minister Bumadi Taimbo was willing to, you know, he, he, he was at Corinthian Baptist Church, helped coordinating the COVID thing, but didn't get the, couldn't get the shot, and he ended up in the hospital. And thank God, he is, just got out this week. So my point is, this is not about, we already did some last time or whatever, it's going back to, let's throw everything we can at this. I know it's a, a quick turnaround, and I tried my best to work as quickly as I could. This came out from the community, and I think sometimes we say what the African-American community needs, we need to have them sometimes tell us what we need. And I respect this organization, and I expect, you know, we talk, we have an African-American funeral home director saying, "Hey, I want to help, we need to do something." I think we should listen at least and look into it. So anyway, I would like it out in the open. I want to thank your chief of staff, because he did present questions to us. We got those questions right back, not to say it won't be other questions. We did bring the manufacturer on and tried to have a Zoom, and I know it's hard because us as three commissioners, we can't be on ourselves, but we asked if the chief of staff could be on. And there, the Health Collaborative CEO was on there asking questions. We had our administrator, Jeff Aludo, was on there asking questions. Your chief of staff, Bishop Bobby Hilton, was on there asking questions, and there were some very good, tough questions that the manufacturer, who, you know, put this bus together, had a chance to really, you know, answer those questions to help us as we move forward. I've also tried to move creatively to say, "How can we get the private sector involved?" And Kroger stepped up quickly, and I want to give them their kudos. They stepped up quickly, said, "We'll put some money to it, we'll put some staff to it, let's get it done. We're in, we'd like to partner on this." So I think that's a positive, some positive energy. Time is of essence, and I think that this could just be one of many things. One of the things with this bus, it cannot be limited to, you know, our, our county health commission can only go, you can't, they can't really go into Cincinnati strong like that. They can't because they have their own health department. We can't go into Springdale, we can't go into Norwood. I want something that can go to all forty-nine municipalities if necessary. And so I think those are some of the things that this would be able to do, and it has a lot of technology. And I want something, when you go out, don't just hand a piece of paper and say, "These are your COVID resources." I want you to be able to get your shot and be able to get an economic shot, where you could go on and touch a button and, and apply for these resources that we have voted on to get to the people. So those are some of the differences, and we've tried to work as quickly as we could, but to also get the governor, the person who, you can't get doses without the governor. The governor decides who gets doses. And for the governor to say, "This is a good idea, let's get it done," I would just hope that all hands would be on deck to try to, you know, make it happen. It's just one of many things that we've got to do to fight this COVID. So I just want to thank you all, and if there's questions, you know, we're open to get those questions and try to get right back to you. And we're looking forward to having something out in the open, but we also want to get a vote out in the open really quickly, because time is of essence. So thank you very much.
Uh huh. Commissioner Drehouse, are, were you done?
Well, no. So now, so I'm, I'm trying to follow along. So does that mean, Commissioner, or Madam President, we'll have it on staff on Tuesday for a vote Tuesday or Thursday? Is that what we're saying?
We'll receive it. When will you receive the resolution, Alicia?
The resolution you should have in your inboxes right now, so.
Okay, so we'll just, I'm sorry, go ahead. So discussed it on Tuesday.
I'll get it to you right now. You should have it in your boxes right now, and I would hope next week we could have a vote.
I would see next week as a vote, that Tuesday would be a discussion, and then, you know, if the majority of the board is willing to vote on Tuesday, we can do that, because a lot of our questions should be answered before Thursday, if we're discussing it on Tuesday. So I would say, yes, we'll have it on the staff meeting on Tuesday, with a possibility of a vote on Tuesday.
Okay, all right, thank you. I, I look forward to the discussion. We've, you know, there, there's a lot to this, I think. And we have made some investments, and I don't want to discount the investments we've made to mobile units, and they are going into hard-hit communities. That is the reason for the units. And so there's some work that's been done, but that's not to say that there's not more work to be done, and I think we'd all agree, we can do better. So I'll look forward to that. Also, Madam President, I, it's, I don't, we didn't recognize this at the top of the month, and, and I, I wish I had offered something. It's Women's History Month, and we didn't have, and so I, I just want to just say that out loud during this month. I think it's interesting that, that we're, you know, we're three women on this commission, and so I, I just want to recognize that. And also, in that vein, there, the applications for the Commission on Women and Girls are open right now. So every year, we welcome new members to the Commission on Women and Girls. The women have two-year terms, the girls have one-year terms. And so ten of the women are rolling off, and all ten of the girls are rolling off. And so the application is on our website. It's, it's a little buried, as they all are, but, but you can find it. And so we're encouraging women and girls to apply. The age for the girls is high school, women of any age, and, and we are especially interested in hearing a lot of diverse voices on the group, because it really does help inform the policies that we bring forward. And so in the past, offices, the other commission offices have offered names of people that might be interested, you know, people that you know that are active in the community, girls that you know that are interested in, in getting involved in either civic life or politics or whatever it is. So please do encourage folks to go ahead and apply. We will then, after the thirty days, the application will close, we'll sort through all that, and then bring forward the names for the commission, and we'll all have to approve of that. But I did want to put that on your radar, because that application process, I think it's a weekend, so I think we've got two or three weeks to go.
Okay, thank you. And I think you asked to have it put on one of our commission meetings.
Yeah, so the, the commission that's working now, unfortunately, all of the work has been virtual, which is challenging, but the recommendations are still very robust and important. And so we've asked that, that go on the agenda for the next evening meeting, so that the girls can attend, otherwise they'd be in school. And so we, our office has talked to yours, Madam President, and so I believe we are on the agenda for next month, for the evening meeting, so that the commissioners can bring forward the recommendations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I just have a few things, as you talk about boards and commissions, we are in desperate need of representatives from my office for the Board of Revision. March the thirty-first is the last time that any resident can file a complaint about their valuation of their home. And my understanding that people are really concerned that their valuation went way up, and so they're complaining and they want to be heard. And so the, the three people that are on the Board of Revision, myself, the treasurer and the auditor, but we all get representatives from our office. I do have two, I'd like to get two, at least two, three more. And if you're a realtor, you know about development, if you know how to read a plan, please contact my office and also get on the website and look for the application and put in, because we want you to be heard. We want to make sure that your concerns are, are, are being met. So we're still looking for a couple more people.
What, what is the deadline?
March, well, March the thirty-first is when you can make, give your concern or complaint, but we need it now. I mean, not that the Board of Revision is not working, because it is operating, but I'd like to have a few more from my office, at least four representatives, so.
Okay, and the deadline to apply then is?
It's just, it's unending until we get our, until we get the people that we need. Yeah. Thank you so much. I don't really have anything else this evening. I'll save, I mean, of course, like all of us, lots of meetings, lots of Zoom meetings, lots of conversation with the public, and I could talk specifically about that maybe the next time. But I am looking at, as we look at, the moratorium on eviction is ending March the thirty-first, there's some talk federally that maybe they may expand that timeline beyond March the thirty-first. Some people, unfortunately, as I've said before, have already been evicted, but I'm working aggressively with our county administrator to look at our lists of evictions in the court right now. And now that's a, just a mass group of people we could help right away. We're looking at strategically how we can do that. I'll be bringing that forward to the commission, because- because we don't want to miss that deadline for sure. So Jeff has had several meetings, not several, uh, a, a couple of meetings as it relates um to doing that because that's about eight hundred and forty people we can help like right off the top. Um, and um, my thought is not only to help those with what's outstanding, but also to give some forward thinking as it relates to what they owe two to three months of what they owe, you know, with the uh appropriate uh representation of the fact that they are in need. Of course, they wouldn't be on the eviction court if they hadn't, if they don't have the need. So we'll continue to help those who are uh needing help with rental assistance. That won't stop. But I'm looking at this mass number of people that we could help immediately. So uh, I will be getting back to the board on, on that issue. Um, and also I'm talking with uh Metro as it relates to um uh, getting out into the community more uh portable ways of doing that, what equipment they may have that can be used uh in the community in addition to the things that we're already doing uh, that may not be a, as high of a ticket item. So I'm looking at that and um, seeing where we can go with that option and to move quickly in that direction. So um, that's what I'm doing right now. I'll move on to unless, oh, Jeff, I want to get you in. You have a, a by leave for sure.
Yes, Madam President, I do have a by leave and I've got one comment, but I, I might defer that real quickly if the board would indulge me. I believe there was another uh public commenter um on, in, for public comments and if.
Yes, sorry about that, Madam President. We have Derek Baumann on the line and Derek wanted to address item number one.
Yeah, I was.
You, were you gonna, were you gonna hold until that item?
Yeah, so, yeah.
Okay, okay. Uh, so I just wanted to make, I, I wasn't quite sure what uh, what, what the speaker, which item the speaker was on for.
Yeah, I know it was item one, yeah.
So, so just briefly then, um, in terms of, of one comment and one by leave, um, Madam President. Um, comment wise, I just wanted to touch briefly on the next round of, of federal stimulus. I know uh, the, the board is aware that we are scheduled to get uh approximately a hundred and fifty-nine million uh, in the next round of, of federal stimulus and this is on top of the CARES Act dollars uh that we'd received uh last year and, and on top of the emergency rental assistance uh funding that we have received. Um, so uh, next week I'll provide the board uh with a recommendation on a process uh for going about determining uh the best way to go about allocating uh those dollars. Um, as you'll remember, uh, with the CARES Act, uh, we had uh really zero time in terms of, in terms of, of planning. We had no time to, to sit back and, and plan. Um, we, we had to act immediately and, and we did that. We got a lot of, a lot of money uh into a lot of uh people's hands uh very quickly and we did a lot of great things with those, with that funding. Uh, with this round, however, we don't have nine months uh to spend the, the, the funding. We have essentially four years. The uh, the, the uh, the deadline that the Act uh provides is uh, uh, the end of December of twenty twenty-four that the dollars would have to be spent by. So um, we, we have an opportunity here to be uh, a bit more strategic uh in terms of, of, of uh how we allocate these dollars. Um, I think we were very thoughtful in terms of how we allocated the CARES Act dollars. We, we gave it a, a lot of intense uh, uh discussion and thought and we reached out to community stakeholders, but we didn't have the chance to really, but we were in the mode of, of stopping the bleeding uh and we didn't really have the chance to be overly strategic uh in terms of looking at things that would have.
Yeah, we're getting like a hologram of you.
Yeah, I, 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 yeah, my, my office went dark, so. So uh, so this year, this year with the next round of, of stimulus payments, we have a chance to do a couple of things. We have a chance to um, not only be a bit more strategic in terms of thinking of, of uses of the dollars that will have long-term transformational impact uh in the community, but we also have the ability to do what we weren't able to do last time either. And that is to, to coordinate a little more effectively with um, our partners at the state level, level, our partners at the federal level. And even now, um, most, many of the municipalities, if not all of the municipalities in the county will be receiving uh funding of their own as well. And so I think we owe it to the community to take a moment to make sure that we are coordinating all of that effective, effectively in allocating these dollars um, in a way that does not duplicate effort and that really hits a transformational need in the community. So um, a long way of saying, um, Madam President and Commissioners, um, I plan on getting the board something next week that would outline the process and would like to bring that to a, an upcoming staff meeting to have a fuller discussion and get feedback from the board uh as to where we go from there. So uh, that's, that's my one uh, uh, comment. I do have a by leave item uh that's listed as, as by leave one on your agenda, uh, the board.
But before we go to item one.
Sure.
Can I also, um, one of the things Jeff, I think will be helpful is um, being able to get a, an analysis of what the need is, is it relates to Hamilton County, getting the actual numbers in terms of, you know, employment, unemployment and uh, people that have been evicted and all those things. Because the only reason we are getting this type of money from the federal government is to make sure that we are uh, getting it on the ground to help the people. And I just want to make sure, I think you're going in the right direction in terms of coordinating with other municipalities we'll have, so we don't duplicate. But um, one of the things I, you know, when sometimes we have a longer term, uh, what I've seen in other governments that I've served in, um, the monies tend to go to um, you know, other things, um, you know, development and all this other stuff. And this was the one time that in my lifetime in American history that I actually saw um, the, the government wanting to bail out the people, invest in the people. And it was a short time, so you had to do it. I just want to make sure um, to know what are the needs and then making sure that way, for me at least, it will help me make a decision on where do we need to invest in the people. I just want to make sure the people are up. Because if they're up, they're going to pay the taxes and all those things and that'll keep us going. So um, I just would love to have some kind of information on kind of where we at now, you know, co- hopefully COVID to be gone, but where are we at now and what would be the areas of, is it, what is the need still in terms of our county, so.
Yeah, that, that, that's, that's a great point, uh, uh, Madam Vice President. And I think that as we, as I uh, bring the, the process forward and get you the information on that, just not, not to go too deep into it at this point, but I think uh, what we want to do is have a process for vetting exactly that and hearing from uh, many of the community stakeholders, what are the needs out there and what are the concerns in all corners of the community uh, so that we can adequately assess that and also have an aspect of our process that lends some uh analytical weight to that as well, so that we're more than just um, giving broad brush to talking about. Um, you know, anyone can say that, you know, rental assistance is a need or small business assistance is a need, but to have the underlying data that helps support that um, is ultimately what, especially given the fact that we've got um, a, 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 a longer period of time to spend this, that we think owe it to the uh, the community to make sure that we're being um, uh thoughtful and analytic about how we, how we allocate this. So I completely agree and the process that we bring forward will, will certainly have an element to that.
I, I know today when I did an interview and they were saying about um, what are we planning on spending the money for? Or of course, we know that the areas that we have spent money on, there is still a need, but there's a greater need in other areas. And that's what I think Jeff was saying as it relates to uh making sure we include our residents and where they think their needs are. We, we know what we think, but uh, we want to know what they think. They're in the middle of it. And as of last Thursday started the clock, sixty days for us to uh, receive the monies. And so we certainly want a strategy and a plan way before those monies come to us. So, and I, and I, I agree with you Jeff, we don't want to duplicate what the federal or the state or other communities are doing either. We want to look at the newness of the new money and what we can do uh, uh differently. So I agree with you, uh, Commissioner Reese, that we need to know um, not only what we think is going on. We know we hit some people, but there are other areas that we have not hit and we can hit better. So, okay, sorry.
Thank you Commissioners. Uh, and the, the by, unless there are other comments, um, the, the by leave I have is uh, item by leave, is, is by leave one in your packet. Uh, this is a resolution to approve the grant of an easement uh to uh, to Duke Energy. This relates to uh, uh, the construction of the central corridor pipeline and the uh, the path of that pipeline through property that the uh county owns and is used by the county engineer on Grooms Road. Um, as the board is aware, there was a, a negotiation that took place on this particular uh easement um, and has resulted in the settlement of a payment by Duke uh, of four hundred nineteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars uh, for the easement, which takes into account um, the permanent easement, the temporary easement and the damage to the residue of the property from uh, the path of the easement through uh, that property on Grooms Road. So um, unless there are any questions, the administration recommends approval uh, of by leave item number one.
Jeff, I just want to thank the administration and the staff who uh advocated for this agreement and uh, did not settle for no. And so we came out pretty good, uh, the county did. And so I, I appreciate that uh, very much. So Vice President Reese, any comment?
I don't have any uh, questions. Uh, I just agree. Uh, they started with a very low number and I just want to thank uh, uh, administration and legal team and the commission because we said, we've got to go back and um, get what it's worth and, you know, and I just want to thank them for the negotiation and, and uh, ready to support it.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Drehouse?
No comments.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you Commissioners, no further uh by leaves or comments.
Thank you. And we have a resident, uh, Derek Baumann, who is on the line, wanted to speak about item number one. Welcome Derek.
Greetings and thank you, Madam President. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Wonderful, wonderful. It's great to see uh, all three of you. And uh, I think I have uh, over the years, talked to each of you individually about uh, this, uh, the topic of this resolution in general being uh, supporting Amtrak. Um, I'd like to offer a little bit of just background uh, if I could. And then uh, and then I'm happy to take any questions uh, to the best of my ability. Uh, I've been on the board of an organization called All Aboard Ohio uh, for about seven or eight years now, I think. Uh, and we have been working on, it's a statewide uh nonprofit uh, public transit advocacy organization. And um, we've worked on everything from uh, bus benches to Amtrak and all modes in between. Uh, but with specific regard to Amtrak, uh, I was actually in front of the, the commission back in about twenty fifteen or so under Commissioner Portoon's leadership, uh, there was a unanimous resolution to support uh, daily rail service to Chicago because the current Amtrak Cardinal that comes into Cincinnati Union Terminal in the middle of the night, it's only a three-day-a-week train. Uh, and so we were uh, kind of on a push to get that to daily. Uh, we still are. Uh, as it turns out, building uh, building trains is not the, uh, is not the easiest thing to do. But uh, we're at a unique moment in time here where uh, in the past, uh, when of, of course, back in twenty-ten, um, Governor Kasich sent back four hundred million dollars to the federal government uh, that would have uh, provided for, for daily rail service within the state of Ohio. Um, we now have an opportunity uh, should Congress uh pass and fund this, where Amtrak is actually taking the lead on it. They're saying, we're going to do this. We're not going to rely on the individual states with their varied degrees of appetite uh, and expertise to do this. Um, so what's being proposed nationally is thirty-five, what they call corridor routes. Um, concentrating on connecting city pairs uh, that are kind of in a three hundred to five or six hundred mile radius um, where it's almost too far to drive, but really not far enough to fly considering all the things that you have to do uh, at the airport. Uh, and so there are thirty-five of those and five of those uh corridor routes that they are proposing are in the state of Ohio, which is very exciting. Um, so what's being proposed and specifically as it impacts Cincinnati and Hamilton County is uh, would result in four round trips a day, uh, and this is in, in addition to the Amtrak Cardinal. Four round trips a day between uh Cincinnati and Chicago and of course, with intermediate stops in between Indianapolis, uh, places like West Lafayette, Indiana, the home of Purdue University. Um, and also kind of parallel to this, we've been working with Amtrak and have actually gotten the city of Oxford uh, approved for a stop because uh, the, the Cardinal has gone right through Oxford for years now with all those twenty-seven thousand college students and doesn't stop. So the city of Oxford actually got approved. Uh, we started that process back in twenty-fourteen. Uh, and they're now moving forward with uh, building a station stop in Oxford uh, to serve uh, Amtrak and also in coordination with uh, Butler County RTA. So that's going to be a hub, kind of a transit hub there in Butler County of serving the students. Um, and now you can envision um, those kids uh connecting to uh, and coming to Cincinnati. Um, it will also include three round trips a day to uh, Dayton, Columbus and Cleveland. Uh, so there are great economic development, great tourism opportunities here and it could be a real game changer for our region. A number of cities uh, and other entities throughout the state have also approved a similar resolution. And so I look forward to uh, your, your support as does my cat, if you can hear her in the background. Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much. You did well. I, I forgot to tell you two minutes because I can talk. But I'm going to pass it over to Commissioner Drehouse because her name is actually on uh, item number one. Uh, Commissioner Drehouse?
Yeah, so Derek came to my office and asked if we would be willing to offer the resolution and um, gain support of the other two commissioners. So I happily brought it forward. Uh, really Derek is the lead on this and has done all the work and thank you for the explanation Derek. Um, I, I was around, Commissioner Reese, you were too, when um, the governor turned that money back um, for light rail in Ohio. Uh, and so we were set back quite a bit when it came to um, light rail um, connecting the three Cs, including the D over in Dayton. Uh, and so I am very excited about the opportunity with the new administration to move forward with different modes of transportation in Ohio. We are so far behind. Uh, and so I think this is a very exciting um, resolution. I, by the way, went to Miami, so I get the Oxford thing. I think whether students want to travel home all the time, I don't know. But anyway, though I have the opportunity to do it. Um, so anyway, uh, Madam President, I appreciate uh, the deference, but I just uh, want to support uh Derek and, and this is actually um, asking our federal delegation to be supportive of the initiative. And, and yeah, you've got the resolution in front of you.
Yeah, would you like to read the resolution?
Well, I tell you what, um, let me.
Put something in your mouth, looks like.
Yeah, no, no, no. I just, I don't want to read the whole thing because you can do that. But um, let me go ahead and read the be it resolved portions, because look at the actionable places. Um, so be it resolved that the Board of County Commission.
I just, I just meant the title.
Oh my heavens, well, that's even true.
Okay.
Um, all right, uh, so while, it, yeah, it does kind of encapsulate the, the two. Get resolved. All right, so um, I will move that we approve of the resolution in support of Amtrak's proposed expansion of passenger rail services in Ohio and for the congressional actions needed to authorize inappropriate funds for the expansion.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Um, yeah, I'm sorry. I thought, I was all confused for a second. Okay, I got it.
Okay, great. Congratulations Derek. Thank you for coming forward also.
Thanks Derek.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. We'll go on to our other uh, regular agenda item, item number two, illustration.
I was muted. Um, thank you, Madam, Madam President. Item number two is Resolution P zero-two-five dash twenty-one. This is authorizing uh, the award of ITB zero-zero-four dash twenty-one and, and execution of an agreement uh, with Brown and Chapman LLC uh, for, on behalf of Paul Brown uh, uh, Stadia LLC. Uh, this is related to uh, part and parcel to some of the items we talked about last time uh, related to infrastructure maintenance uh, at Paul Brown Stadium, specifically relates to um, uh, silicate sealing and crack filling uh procedures on the exterior concrete on the north side of the building. Uh, silicate sealing uh installations on some of the exposed stairways where uh, due to winter de-icing operations um, in the freeze thaw, thaw cycle, we have um, small, almost uh, non-visible cracks that, that appear in concrete. And this will allow us to uh, seal those effectively and waterproof them to avoid water intrusion into the concrete uh, of the built, of the uh, structure causing uh, further problems down the road. of the built, of the structure causing further problems down the road. It was awarded to the lowest and best bidder and the administration recommends approval.
Thank you. I, I will open it up for discussion, Vice President Reese.
No, I, I had talked with Jeff about this and this is the maintenance, regular maintenance that is part of the contract, so I have no problem with it right now.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a regular agenda, agenda item number two.
Second.
Ms. Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have before us consent agenda items and I'd like to just do a summary for those that are watching or listening. Basically, the consent agenda items are, there's a building system replacement probation grant that will be asking for approval. There's also a purchase of three vehicles, two for planning and development, actually one for planning and development and two for the Sheriff Department. And then the coroner is ordering equipment that is needed. And there are a couple $10,000 grants also in the consent agenda item. And we are, if approved, withdrawing, there's a petition to withdraw the annexation of four acres in Loveland, Ohio. And then JFS has services for a group home. I think it was $100,000 for group home services. So at this point, I'll open it up if there are any questions or concerns or comments as it relates to our consent agenda items. Vice President Reese?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Drehouse?
No questions.
Thank you. So I would ask, I would make a motion to adopt items three through six, defer item seven, item eight for adoption and nine, 11 through 12, item 14 for approval.
Second.
Commissioners, I, I, I may have got lost in that, but number 10 and 13?
Yes, uh-huh. Receive, we're going to receive that for the record.
Okay, all right.
So it, that was a second, okay?
Yes.
Ms. Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'd also like to make a motion to receive for the record items 10 and 13.
Second.
Ms. Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. I was trying to make sure you were awake, Michael.
Well done.
Okay, okay. Um, I don't have anything else. I wanted to, well, let me see if you guys have anything in addition, any comments that you'd like to make before we close?
I, Madam President, I do not have any additional comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Just a final thank you to Springfield Township for jumping on tonight.
Thank you. I have a very important message today, this evening. Today is my oldest sister's birthday. There are four girls and she's the oldest, always the oldest. So I wanted to wish my sister Gloria a happy birthday. So, and at that point, I'd like
Madam President, now that you've done that, Fatima Ba, my administrative aide, it's her birthday. If she's watching, I don't want her to get mad at me. So happy birthday Fatima as well.
Yes, happy birthday Fatima. Vice President Reese, do you have any birthdays?
I hope not. And I may be in big trouble, but not, none that I know of at this time.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good evening.